Mr. Bateson, if you take us through.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And looking at the agenda, the first item up is the minutes to consider and act upon the minutes from the regular meeting of September 26, 2018. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept.
A second?
Second.
Any edits or changes?
I do not have any.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, we have some recognition. Step it here. All right. Some recognition for Pequot Library winning the 2018 Connecticut Treasures Award. Ms. Coakley, would you come up and fill us in on this honor for Pequot and our entire town?
Thank you, First Selectman Tetra. Thank you all for inviting me here this afternoon. Good afternoon. As mentioned, I'm Stephanie Coakley, Executive Director of Pequot Library. And on behalf of all of us at the library, I'd like to cordially invite all of you to a special celebration taking place Tuesday of next week, that's October 9, at 11:00 a.m. I'll tell you a little bit about this award. Organized by the State Chapter of the American Institute of Architects, Pequot Library won this prestigious nomination. Thanks to a number of architects in our state, we were nominated to represent Fairfield County in this year's library-themed contest. So it's not always libraries, but this summer they selected libraries as a focus, and we won. Seven other libraries were included, course each representing a county throughout the state. And after a short period of online voting this July, and some of you may have voted for us, thank you very much, it looks like indeed Fairfield's Pequot Library is our state's most popular and beloved architectural gem of a library.
Well, congratulations.
We're so excited to have won that award. And just to give you a quick little number of statistics, we won by a large margin, 50% -- over 50% of the votes. Over 1,500 people voted for us, and we're just so especially honored. And I know First Selectman Tetra, you'll be there Tuesday morning. I hope others again can join us. And it'll be a special treat, too, because the state's new troubadour, Nikita Waller, will join us and sing the Connecticut anthem. So that'll be a fun addition to the program. And again, thanks for inviting me to this afternoon's meeting. I hope to see you all there Tuesday, 11:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie, before you go, any questions in the board or comments?
I would just like to congratulate you on all the hard work you guys do down there. I know it's a gem, and has been for many, many years in the town. And a lot of people rely on the services you provide. So thank you. This award is well-deserved.
Thank you so much. And I just want to say that I think all of us locally recognize how special Pequot Library is, but now statewide, I think we have more recognition. So that's really exciting. Thank you again.
All right. Mr. Bateson, you have any thoughts?
No, all good. Great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm just thrilled that the whole state's recognizing what we know for so long has been very special about Fairfield and Southport and the library and the great work you've done there and, you know, event after event that are going on down there. And I'm seeing bigger and bigger crowds. So thank you for including everybody in the Pequot celebration here. And again, this is great publicity for the library and great recognition for the programs and everything else that you've done there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, appointments. This is to here consider and act upon the following appointment to the Shellfish Commission. Lizette Einhofer, Republican, 164 Churchill Road, for a term of 1114 to 1119. And this is to fill a vacancy created by recent resignation. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Einhofer had called in -- Einhofer had called in earlier to say that she had a family matter she's attending to, so she won't be able to make it to today's meeting. Any comments from the board?
Thank you for her willingness to serve, and we'll catch up a little later on.
Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, I had a call in to her. I didn't hear back, but I did look at her resume. Everything looks great. And I know she's been to a couple of meetings, and she talked to John Short, so I'm good with her if you want to proceed.
I am. I had -- I did have a chance to talk to her. We had an excellent conversation on the phone. She's very enthusiastic about this and has a passion for the Shellfish Commission. She's already attended some of the meetings and clinics, and we talked about that going back to her past and having participated in some clamming events. So I think that having somebody that kind of interest and that focus is just a great positive here. So yes, I'm ready to proceed if it's okay with you all.
I'm good.
All right. Any comments from the public? Seeing none. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Einhofer. And you do need to get sworn in if you're watching this at home. All right. Next, as we discussed briefly earlier, can I have a motion to take Item 7, the Water Pollution Control Authority item report, out of order?
I'd like to make a motion to do that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, Mr. Michelangelo, can you give us the update on the WPCA?
I believe our chairman, Mark Ellison, was going to provide the information today. I'll be around here for any other questions.
That works. Great. Sorry.
Gentlemen, thank you for including us on the agenda today. It is a pleasure to be here. My name is Mark Ellison. I'm here today as the chairman of the WPCA, and I'm joined by fellow board member Joe Diavento, as well as Joseph Michelangelo and Chris Rogers. Our intention today is to preview the upgrades that are needed for the town's wastewater treatment plant and begin a dialogue on how that is best accomplished from a funding perspective. We have provided a fairly substantial executive overview of the opportunity that lies ahead, but first, perhaps I might provide a minute or two of context as a segue as to where we are today. When First Selectman Tetra appointed me to the board in March of 2013, the issue before the WPCA was whether there was going to be a building moratorium, given the flows at the plant being at or sometimes beyond capacity of the plant. On average, about 9 million gallons were coming into a plant with a capacity of 9 million gallons. My desire to join the board was to assist the WPCA in finding ways to reduce the amount of sewage and associated debris that is discharged into the Long Island Sound. Discharge is caused primarily through excess flows to the plant. Fortunately, there's not been a great deal of new development during this time, and the department has been able to focus on removing INI, which is infiltration and inflow from the system. Their efforts have been extremely successful, and flows to the plant have been reduced by about 15% over the last five years. So we're averaging about 7.5 million gallons per day, down from 9 million. At the same time, back in 2013, the board began weighing the needs of upgrades to the plant after about five years now of analyzing the situation. Many vital mechanical components are at the end of their life cycle. It's not surprising for a facility that has not had any significant CapEx for over just about 20 years now. Our approach has been measured and opened. And we had a public hearing now. I guess that was about a year ago. There have been active interaction between the design professionals, the department, the WPCA, and the Office of Economic and Community Development. So that brings us to where we are today, to discuss the upgrades we are proposing, the need to leverage the town's credit rating, and engage in a dialogue on how we might fairly and justly appropriate the cost of these upgrades to the roughly 17,000 homes and businesses that tap into these lines. So I defer to you gentlemen on how you'd like to proceed with today's discussion.
One, can you give us, if it's okay with the board, just a little more background on what's making up the entire process here? I know that there was an update at the recent capital planning workshop. I wasn't able to attend that. Mr. Bateson, I think you were there?
Yep.
Chris, I think you weren't able to get there either. Can you give us a summary of what's going on? And specifically, I guess, if I had to focus on one question, with this investment, how much will the capacity of the system increase? Where it -- we have a 9 million capacity roughly, 9 million per day, gallons per day. Talk to us about what's being proposed.
Yeah, so let me address the last question first. There is not -- we are not building in any additional capacity. The cost of doing that would be substantial, tens of millions of dollars in order to do that, given the footprint of the plant. I would say we are by nature extremely fiscal, fiscally conservative. We've tried to figure out how long we can postpone this and what we're going to need going forward. Between the INI that's being taken out of the system, I mentioned 15%, or 1.5 million gallons per day, we expect to continue to take INI out of the system. And as we know, as new projects come online, there's new technologies that are really reducing the flow into the system. On the way here, I stopped by the relatively new rest stop at I-95. There's approximately -- this is what we do as volunteer members. We visit our clients. There are roughly, I would say, well, in the men's room, there were 10 urinals and six or seven toilets, and there's probably a similar number in the women's room. They are, it's arguably the most used property in Fairfield, and yet they pay us $35 a day. And, you know, they're the 14th or 15th largest client. So a long-winded way of saying, we don't expect that new development will bring in a lot of flow. So we're not inclined to spend the money to expand the size of the plant.
How does that fit with the estimates of growth from economic development? You've mentioned you sat down with Mark Barnhart and had a chance to look at his projections.
Yeah, we've done that, and the consultants hired to study what should be done have done that as well. So those are accounted into the projected flows and the capacity of the plant. In terms of the expenses, I might defer to Joe on that in terms of the, you know, I guess the question is, what are we going to spend the $50 or $60 million on?
So I, my question would be, you mentioned the McDonald's, the rest stop. There's two of them. Are they both paying $35 a day?
$35 each.
$35 each, okay. So why wouldn't they be on a flow meter to pay what they're actually putting into the system?
They, if they recognize many of these new devices don't flow. It's, they're not using much water. So we're capturing the flows, it's just they're extremely efficient.
So it's, so they are on a meter and it costs $35 a day?
Yeah. Yeah. The point being that as new users come online, there's not going to be a significant amount of new flow that comes into the system. In fact, we think that we'll probably be able to offset that with the INI that's taken out of the system.
Chris, can I ask that slightly differently?
Sure.
Just, who are the top four or five users of the system?
Top is by far and away Fairfield University, who pays us so far $100,000 a year. And then a number of condominium associations, the high school. Yeah, we have the list, but the list doesn't necessarily correspond to the property. It's often the mailing address of the property owner.
Gotcha.
So this is helpful, but you kind of need a decoder for it. But Fairfield University is by far and away the largest. They're also the largest payer of, as a new building comes online, there is a special assessment that is charged to remove INI out of the system. And Fairfield University and Sacred Heart these days are kind of neck and neck as the largest payers of INI fees.
What, if I might, how does it work with Sacred Heart purchased the GE campus? What's taking place with that? What are we seeing in terms of?
Yeah, it's an excellent --
Flow and usage?
Excellent question, and quite topical. Sacred Heart is, came in, they're in front of the board just about every month with a new building or redesign of a building. They are somewhat, we are somewhat capacity constrained at the GE campus site. There is a pump station on the GE property, which is leased to the WPCA. The property is now owned by Sacred Heart, ironically. Sacred Heart, to support the growth that's projected on the GE campus, has acknowledged that that pump station will need to be upgraded. The cost of doing that is going to be approximately $1.7 million. It's been on our radar for a number of years as something that we know that it needs to be done. The pumps are old, I believe they're 20 years old, plus or minus, 20 years plus. But again, it's, when I came onto the board, it's always been, yeah, how can we be most efficient? So we haven't pressed that. The development of the GE campus will press that. There is not capacity of those pumps to handle what needs to be done.
Do the pumps handle more than Sacred Heart?
Yes, they do, but not, it's not a significant amount more.
So it's 50% more, 75%? How much of the, how much, I'm trying to figure out, how much of that pump is dedicated to Sacred Heart and the GE campus?
And I'd say probably 50% is a rough estimate. And most of that comes from GE itself, but in addition, the properties behind that Toll House Lane Stevenson, there's a condo complex, all of that goes there. And the hill that goes down from Colonies all the way to the pump station there, Hawthorne Drive, those subdivisions filter that, too. But that's figuring into account 50% currently, but the GE campus, most of the GE campus itself on Park Avenue flows into the city of Bridgeport. So they have been before us for the WPCA, the last two meetings with their overall development plan for the entire complex, and the entire development exceeds the capacity. So one of the questions is, you know, at what point does that pump station get upgraded and how the cost will work for that?
Is this the Easton Pump Station, the Forest Main?
Yes. Easton Pump, I think, of all Easton.
Yeah. So there's a meeting this week with Sacred Heart. Our position is that they should pay for a substantial component of that upgrade expense. They have said that they're open to discussions.
Well, without getting into your negotiations in more detail, I think that it's very healthy that you're having that discussion, and I would hope that they would look forward to making a significant contribution.
Might invite you to that meeting.
Okay. Happy to help.
Yeah.
Happy to help.
Yeah, we're in agreement on that.
I got a couple other things you want me to?
Mr. Bateson, go right ahead.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, and I know, I know we need to open up the discussion about how we're going to pay for it. I, I'm not an engineer, but when you just said that, you know, the dollars we're talking about, but I'm not upgrading, increasing my capacity, it sounds like it's not a plant upgrade. It looks like we're trying to address a collection problem like INI, if we want to reduce flow. I don't, how do I sell this to the users that I'm investing, I don't even know where we are, $60 million without increasing capacity? That, to me, that seems shortsighted. I know we might not have the real estate down there, and I get it that the dollars might not make sense, but are we addressing what we really think is the issue? To me, it seems like the issue is the collection system. Why not?
No, I would say the issue is the age of the equipment. And, you know, we had the public hearing at the plant. It really warrants a tour of the plant. If you conceptualize 9 million gallons of wastewater coming into a plant, and you then visually look at this equipment and know that there's no Plan B for this equipment, and that equipment has been used for at least 20 years, often much longer, much of it below ground, that if there was a failure, we're all going to be saying, you know, how did we let this happen? It's not, you know, we could come back and say, you know, to upgrade the capacity 10 or 20%, we could get an estimate for that. I think you'd flinch. We're saying we're down to 7.5 million gallons per day based on INI work. We're going to do more INI work. Happy to provide the estimate for what increased capacity for the plant might be, but this is bringing old equipment up to, you know, to where it needs to be.
Can I? Yeah. Just quickly. One, I didn't get a chance to do that tour, and I haven't done one, did one early on my first term, I haven't done one since. I'd love a chance to come down and do that, and maybe we can coordinate that with the Board of Selectmen, if that would be of interest to my colleagues, but just to get a chance to walk through that. And if I do the math in reverse, we're at 7.5 million, there's a 9 million kind of capacity, rough number, that, so we're basically at 80% of capacity right now, because that's a 20% increase, based on what you've been able to achieve.
Yeah.
So it's not that we, I think, it's not either or. If I'm, it's, we need to do the upgrade, as I'm hearing it, we need to do the upgrade to the plant because it's 20-something years old and the equipment and the instrumentation is not up to standard to be as efficient as we need it to be today. Second, we're going to have ongoing INI and distribution issues. That's just, that's been ongoing, the nature of this. And we've got, how many lines of piping or distribution system do we have?
200.
200.
Okay. How many of those have we done the camera thing on and done the INI thing on all the way through?
That's a good question.
A large portion, we're always doing.
Is a large portion like 25% or like 75%?
75%.
We know the hot spots. We know where, you know, where we're processing Rooster River, you know, versus wastewater. We know. We know where to allocate the resources.
We've just spent $1.7 million on it.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't mean to take over. I just wanted to.
The other point to Mr. Tetra's question about excess, you know, increasing capacity, we found over the last year that actual use, water use of the 17,200 plus or minus users was down about 9%. We think a lot of that has to do as people upgrade their sinks and upgrade their toilets and so forth. They're just becoming more efficient. We expect that trend to continue.
But then it seems to me that that just highlights the INI problem more. If, you know, if we're saying consumption's going down, yet we see the average daily flow increasing, I mean, it just highlights to me that there's a collection system issue as well as the mechanical.
They've gotten the average daily flow down to 7.5. Right? So it's just, it's not a static number. It's going to.
No, the trend analysis is terrific. Yeah, there's, you know, this summer, there were rain events, and it was up over 10 million a day at times. But the trend analysis over five years is.
For consumption?
Distribution and your.
No, for.
Okay. I think, I'm using your term distribution. I'm not trying to pull origin up. I'm trying to.
The collection.
I'm trying to make sure we're on the same page here. So it's the distribution or collection system, however you want to phrase it.
Mark, when you started off, you know, outlining, one of the things you talked about was looking towards how we're going to fund this, right?
Yeah.
And that's what you're asking the board for today?
Yeah, I think that's kind of the elephant in the room.
You want us to start thinking about different options for you to fund?
Well, I think the issue is, and the question is, do we fund this through a general tax increase, or do we fund this with sewer user fees?
Yeah, I'll jump in. I didn't know this was on our, I knew this was on our radar through the capital planning, but what caught my attention was when I went, I'm now the selectman rep on the WPCA, and when I went to set, the meeting where they set the rate, they had had, I'm going to say a component in there where they're starting to front-load costs for improvements. I'm not saying it's directed towards the treatment plant, but there's planning and so forth going in there. And I'm like, hey, it looks like the WPCA is setting the stage for them funding the whole thing. And that's when I sent you gentlemen the email, like, hey, I think we need to talk about this because I think this discussion needs to happen sooner rather than later as to how we're going to pay for it, so that there's, you know, not money taken out ahead of time, and then all of a sudden, we change our mind.
Yeah, I think our presenter put it on the table in front of us. I wasn't quite sure we'd get into this today either, but we have to have the discussion. We don't have to decide today.
No, yeah.
But kicking it off is not bad. I think that, you know, one of the components and one of the things for me that's made me consider strongly, the idea of doing it in service fees, is our top users are, some of them are not taxable. So that the number one user, Fairfield U, would not be paying for the upgrades if we did it and funded it out of property taxes. And certainly the state component and to the extent that Sacred Heart is a strong user on that, just for consideration. Again, not trying to solve it today, just trying to come up with a holistic solution to this.
I agree with that process, Doc.
When I was on years ago when we had this discussion, there was, I'm going to say, a movement afoot in town where that is the normal way of funding sewage treatment, plant upgrades. You do it through the rate. Fairfield took a different or unique approach in the '90s when we did that treatment plant upgrade, where it came through as a general taxation, and that was based upon a rationale of everyone benefits from clean water. Back then, I think our goal was nitrogen removal to improve the health of Long Island Sound. And that, I kind of understood that at the time was, well, you know, somebody on Greenfield Hill, they're really not hooked into the system. They might be paying it through septic fees, so it's a little different up there, but, you know, they're getting, you know, people down here are getting taxed twice. So I never really understood it, but I kind of came to grasp that theory that clean water benefits everyone. And since we're a shoreline town, I think that was more important.
Yeah, I think it's not about a right or wrong way approach, first of all, right? They're just different perspectives on how you look at that. And I think what I looked at is, I've had a chance to talk to both Mr. Michelangelo and members of the commission, is that it somehow doesn't seem fair to all the taxpayers if the top users of the system are not contributing to the major upgrades.
And that has changed substantially in 20 years. You're right.
Yes.
But we didn't have Sacred Heart before.
And we have Sacred Heart and Fairfield U are both going gangbusters, as we heard from building permits and everything else.
You're right. That is a totally different world.
So their share of the business, if you will, will continue to increase. So I think that it's, I think it's important that they contribute as part of this. So that's why I'd ask us to at least look at that piece of the formula. And again, I don't mean to take up today's meeting. It wasn't an agenda item per se. Certainly, thank you for bringing it up, though, because it's good that we kicked that off. As you said, you want to know about all the elements as you go into the discussion.
We've engaged third-party professionals to start looking at what other towns are doing, what models may look like in terms of financing and funding. It's a very iterative process. We don't expect to have a decision tonight, but I think the, the earlier we begin the dialogue, the better.
I would like to, the project list, which is on page six here, you know, is there a way to stretch that out? I see, I see a lot of pump stations being upgraded, and I'm wondering why. I mean, do you, I understand the logic, like, it's 20 years old. Which ones can last longer to stretch it out instead of over a five-year period? Maybe we stretch it out over a 10-year period? Is that something?
I have to tell you that we, these were next-year items when I joined the commission five years ago.
Okay.
We're very good at postponing spending money.
Yes, we are.
Yes.
So, all right, so that's already been looked at.
Yeah. You look at, you look at the WPC rate, WPCA rate compared to other towns, we're half of what Bridgeport is.
Half. I think we're in the bottom half for all the neighboring towns, if I remember your chart correctly.
Easily. Easily, bottom quarter. Extremely efficient department.
When can we get an, Mike, when can we get an update? When I was at this meeting for the WPCA, there was a lot of confusing, I'm sorry, Joe, you weren't there. Chris might have been there. When it comes to over the development of train station, that whole trunk line, it seems to be that there's three pieces. We just approved the 1.7, which was, I'm going to call, I think they identified it as the gastric bypass. That was approved. Now we have the one, there's another one called the wetlands crossing that was supposed to be funded by a developer that might not be happening now. And that might wind up in our capital plan, or we're looking for a settlement. Is that now going to be an additional piece?
So the, our east trunk line, when it leaves the metro station itself, so when the metro center was built, that whole area through the metro center was built with a 36-inch pipe. Unfortunately.
Unfortunately, beyond the metro center, there is 33-inch and 30-inch pipe all the way to Riverside Drive. So as part of a capital project that was approved, that's the $2.5 million one where we got some state grant for it, the plan was to upgrade that whole section in question to a 36-inch pipe. In going through the design of that, the 350 feet immediately when it leaves the metro center to Canard is area of old ash, it's old foundry fill that they used to use when Bullards was there. Casting sands is the word I was looking for. That was, you know, that was lined like a landfill, that became, out of the whole stretch, that was what was driving our cost. So we took a step back and said, with our, with our project ongoing, let's tackle 90 percent of it with our current project. The other one was not just involving sewer pipe, it was more of a, you know, contaminant remediation job of going through that area there. So that still needs to be done, but once again, it's not going to fit into our, into our currently approved plan. As part of the I and I fees, which I know the project is still going through other commissions, wetlands and plan zoning, but as part of the Black Rock Realty project that our WPCA approved, the funds for that, the connection fees, so to speak, are $1.5 million. So hopefully that project will be, you know, go to fruition if it gets built as, as, you know, if it gets approved as our WPCA approved it, there's a funding source of $1.5 million that we could spend anywhere on our collection system, but it makes sense to spend it right in that area there. And the other part of the east trunk line is the section between DeSanti Tire and Chambers Street.
That's the 7.5 million one?
Correct. Which, so the concept behind that, instead of running behind the BOE in Ash Creek, bring it to Kings Highway area, so it's high and dry instead of being low and wet.
So the remediation of, the remediation and the upgrade of that line underneath the marsh, we're hoping is going to be covered by the 1.5 in the connection fee?
Correct, correct, but once again, you know, we do the, we collect the money, and it's up to us to figure out how we're going to skin the cap, but once again, we didn't want to have, you know, we, you know, we didn't want to have a $2.5 million project where we're, where we're spending, you know, we don't want to spend $500 a foot for the rest of the project, and our short little section there by the wetlands crossing ends up costing us.
Have we ever addressed, I remember I and I was a huge issue down there, have we addressed the I and I coming in under there, or we have not?
As far as under that wetlands crossing there? None of that, that's, none of that from the metro station to Riverside Drive is still the, you know, we've done some work over the years.
The one of our I and I hotspots?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No. Just one point of clarification, when, when Mark cited the $35 a day for the resters, he was citing an average. So they pay, just like every other user in town, based on the potable water bill, they pay the same rate, so they pay, you know, 13,000 a year, both sides of that. So you divide it by 365, it comes out to $35.
$35 is a big, big bill.
Yeah, but they pay the same as everybody else, they don't pay a flat $35. They pay based on the meter close.
All right. Thank you, Michelle, and thank you very much for giving us an update on that. And let's talk about timing of when you need decisions made, so we can bring that discussion back to the board and give our board a little notice as to what we'll be discussing, and so we can look at surrounding towns and everything that's taken place as part of that.
Appreciate it.
All right? Thank you very much. All right. So now we're on to item six, which is to hear a status update from the Director of Public Works, and on the back end of this, we'll have a private executive session. So, Mr. Michelangelo, why don't you take us through the public works yard update and get us started?
So as you know, the last several years, the aggregate pile of the public works yards caused us considerable issues, largely with our neighbors and the population of the beach area. Those included the visual of the pile, the noise, the trucking, the dust, runoff of material at the Pine Creek, et cetera. So we were having meetings with the residents, and one of the concepts that came about, and this was, Dennis McCarthy was involved in the meetings due to his work with the Fire Training Center and the Harvest New England site. And one of the experiences he has in other towns was working with the gentleman Peter Menooty from the University of Connecticut with landscape, landscape architecture. So that sort of evolved and developed, and we developed with our neighbors a plan to construct a landscape berm around our wastewater, around the aggregate yard and Harvest New England to alleviate the issues with our facility there. So I think most people here are aware of that. And just the progress of how that went, the project started in April this year, around April 1st, and a lot of the early stuff was the legwork of surveying, silt fence, getting material tested. Then our crews went in and started moving the material, shaping the berm as per the Then the following work was the seeding according to the plan, landscaping it, we have a landscape berm. So the work was completed between April 1st and June 30th, so it was substantially completed by June 30th. Because of the summer and the heat when we start getting into June, there was some additional work that had to be done in August, just to reseed and reggerminate, so the, so the material came there. So the, hopefully this will show up decently. So the, this is an aerial shot that we took from Fairfield Beach Road, and it was done with a drone, and we could try to get it as high as possible. And this shows what the residents see from Fairfield Beach Road now. So you can see the bottom of the berm has the gravel trail along the bottom. There are some, if you were close, you could see the peak of the transfer station out there, you can see the peak of our public works garage per se. You could see some areas of the wastewater treatment plant, the Fire Training Center, but the berm has accomplished the objective, and, you know, kudos to Peter Menooty in working with the residents, the design charrette, we got everybody involved. So our residents on Fairfield Beach Road, this is what they observe now. If you were looking closely, you could see just a little gray where the pile is there now, but the berm has accomplished the objective from the Fairfield Beach Road aspect of it. As I put in the memo, we had 100,000 cubic yards as a result of the Julian operation there, at the end of the Julian operation. The berm around the periphery of the, both the aggregate yard and the Harvest New England consumed 40,000, so there is still 60,000 material behind the berm, and that's something that we'll deal with in the future. We feel, you know, now that the material's out of sight, we feel the material does, we have found some beneficial reuses for material, and we're going to continue to do that. So ideally, once we carve out the 60,000 cubic yards and use it and use it over the years, we'll have a nice horseshoe surrounded by a landscape berm that allow us to do the public works operations of limited scope and quantity inside of this operation, away from our neighbors, shielded, and away from Pine Creek. So there's a lot of benefits that we've accomplished with this construction of the berm.
What are we doing with our asphalt waste now?
The stuff still comes into our yard, and we're basically processing it at different areas of our yard. So if you go up there, we have about a half a dozen bins, and when the material comes in, we sort it, so if we have concrete, let's put it over there, if you have asphalt, put it over there, you have gravel, put it over there. So we try to segregate it so we don't mix it up. And then we, you know, we have a sorter, a screener, so we do that in pieces where we screen stuff and do reuse it. We do bring stuff to a construction outfit in Stratford that we pay to take it. We do send stuff out that we pay to get rid of, but for the last, so since this, so since December of 2016, not, no material has gone into the site, and it's not ideal, but we've been managing it in parts of our public works yard. So it's, it's not the most efficient way, we won't want to do it forever long-term that way, but that's how we've been handling it, and that's, gives us confidence in the future that we can continue handling our waste in a similar manner without, you know, breaking the bank, paying to get rid of it, or create havoc with our neighbors down there.
So the, like, street sweeper waste, that gets sorted through, or does that get dumped?
Some of it we've paid to get rid of, some of it remains on site there. So we have, one of our bins has street sweepings there.
Mr. Bates? Can I, Joe, can you quantify, since we shut down the Julian operation, can you quantify how much you're spending on addressing our town-generated waste? What's been your budget impact on that? 20,000, 100,000?
More along the lines of 20,000. Well, once again, just because we, you know, we don't send everything out, we just, we send the worst stuff out, I'd say, so the stuff.
So that's what you think is, now, we're not putting our internal labor in there, you're saying 20,000 is what I'm paying to ship stuff out?
Correct, and we, we'll drive it to the location.
And we still haven't come to a plan about where we're going forward? I imagine all resources have been dedicated to solving the pile. And now going forward, we're just kind of like juggling the ball, saying we're trying to keep stuff moving, but we still don't have a plan as to what we're going to do?
Well, you know, as. Not exactly, but I think Joe can fill you out. We're actually developing a five-year plan for that whole area right now, and Joe can tell us.
Correct. Yeah, so, yeah, so there's many components of the five-year plan, you know, one road highway has, you know, dozens of different operations from the wastewater treatment plant to the Harvest New England, to the fire training, to our transfer station, to public works, which all impact our neighbors to some degree. But specifically regarding the aggregate, yeah, the big chunks, we call them, we have not, so the stuff that, we don't have a, we don't have anything to pulverize the material. So at some point, once it builds up large enough, we'll have a contractor come there for a limited scale, whether it's, whether it's two weeks or a month under our direction, or possibly we'll rent the equipment ourselves and crush the material on site. We have the option of sending that away, but that's where the prices get over $50 a ton. So most likely, the best way to deal with the chunks is to rent a crusher. Everything, say, five inches or smaller, could be screened, could be used as a, as a clean construction fill for a lot of projects, depending on how much, what you're doing.
When you say chunks, are we talking asphalt and concrete?
Correct, asphalt, concrete, boulders, things like that.
Okay.
Catch base in tops, catch base in bottoms.
So just to summarize, when we terminated, when the relationship with Julian ended, we had a pile of 100,000 cubic yards, we used 40,000 cubic yards for the berm.
Yep.
You're planning on, out of that 60 that's left over, you're hopefully going to use 15,000 cubic yards for the WPCA hardening project.
Correct.
So we still have 45,000?
That will remain.
Correct.
Okay.
So we'll continue to seek avenues to beneficially reuse that construction project.
Mr. Timney?
Does Julian contend that that's their, their leftover waste, the 100,000 cubic yards?
I think getting into what Julian is contending or not may not be a question for Joe, and we might be able to get into that a little bit later.
Okay.
I think that's why we have him here.
Yes, correct.
Right.
Any?
I'm thinking I really want to get to him.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Then if that's it for the update, Joe, thank you very much, and if I can have a.
I'm sorry, just to wrap up, though. Essentially, from a, from a town, from your perspective, you've done as much as your department can do.
At the site there.
Excluding the WPCA hardening, you've used as much material as you could for the berm and.
I think that that's kind of what the, Joe gave us a memo here along with the packet, and I think he's identified a few different areas where we've been able to use this, and so we'll continue to look at projects where we can use it on site. And Joe, I think he said there were some soft feelers anyway from folks in, I'm going to, out of town, if that's the correct term, that might be interested in some, not, nobody's walking in saying, I'll take 20 or 30,000.
Gotcha.
But it'd be a couple thousand here and 5,000 there, kind of thing.
And we'd get our purchasing agent involved in that, it wouldn't be a deal that I'd make, so.
And it, practically speaking, what I hear you saying, Joe, is we've cut down the inflow.
Correct.
So we're back to just the street sweeps and things that we generate.
Correct.
And so over time, we'll continue to work that pile down.
And even the way we do projects, so if we hire a company to pulverize one of our roads, whether it's a tilt out on ONG, part of that contract initially is you own the material and you take it back, it's not coming back to our yard. So that's part of the bids that we formulate, and we've done that with the company.
Right, none of this, you could bring in some stuff and mix it, and.
Correct, yeah.
It's all going to be, this is it, pulverize it and get it out.
Same thing with some building projects, you know, we can't absorb it for, for the benefit of other projects.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Joe as part of the public updating report?
I would just say, Joe, I think the before and after pictures are pretty impressive. Kudos to your department for taking care of that, building the berm, making it look much better for the neighbors. And like I said, the before and after pictures, it looks remarkably better in a short period of time.
And we had a core group of guys, about six or seven guys, that really took it on. Emmett Hipson was around as our cheerleader to keep everybody with the, in the straight line, but everybody had a good attitude, so, and, you know, as public works got, you know, these guys there every day, so to them, you know, this is, it was rewarding, you're building something that'll be there and you'd be proud of, and, you know, on some days, it's better than going out and, you know, and filling a pothole or cleaning the catch base and so.
All right. Joe, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion to go into private executive session with attorneys Hoffman and Katz.
Big motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.